Hi, sorry, I did not mean to end that video. So, I'm back. Okay. Let's see. Do you like this? And here we go. I'm Misty Carlfeld again with Health Freedom Idaho. Now, instead of hitting finish, I'm just gonna turn this around. Thanks for bearing with me, guys. I'm working on it. I'm working on it. I'm getting better. I'm all set up now with a tripod and a microphone, so we're getting there. Okay, here we go. Here's our beautiful Idaho State Capitol. I love it. Happy to be here with all these patriots. Hey, there's actually media here. They like to pretend that we're not here. That we aren't doing important things and try to ignore us. But they can't ignore today because this is a historic day. This is a historic day in the history of our nation. Do you see any other states having their legislature stand up to the governor? This is pretty amazing. Now, you can always tell who the mainstream media are because they're wearing masks. Oh, I'm glad I can breathe today. It's gonna be hot. I'm glad I don't have to wear a mask and I can breathe freely here on a beautiful Idaho day. Oh, that would suck to wear a mask. Am I right? Let's walk on by this petition. So, this petition is the recall petition. Okay, let's see that sign. "Are you willing to hand your child over to a social worker? Say no to contact tracing." You guys, this is my heart. You know this, right? Okay, I am gonna take... Let's see if I can take a picture while I'm live. I don't wanna end it again, but let's see. Okay, I'll have to come back and get pictures. That's awesome. And this is legit, you guys. This is what it's all about. It's about our children. It's all about our children, the most precious commodity, right? They have commoditized our children. Thank you, friends. I appreciate you. Hey Lynn.
Hi.
You're working here at the recall Governor Little table? How is it going? Can somebody tell us how many signatures we have and how many are needed? We're live on Health Freedom Idaho page right now.
We need about 200,000.
Okay.
Fewer, but we need more. Because we know many of them are gonna be thrown out.
Right. Oh, here. You know what? I bet you they can't hear you. Can I come over here? Okay. Let's fill people in. And it's not that Health Freedom Idaho can endorse the recall petition, but I want you all to be informed about what's going on.
Thank you. Yes, so you need to be registered to vote in the state of Idaho. We want to make sure that anyone who is signing knows the exact name that they used when they registered to vote and how they signed. They can go to idahovotes.gov and check their voter registration there. We are suspecting that they're not actually showing middle initials and middle names if you did use them. So if you have that voter registration card or you can call the county clerk's office and ask them how you registered to vote and how you signed as well.
Okay, so can I clarify that? So what you're saying, if you use a middle initial and you didn't use a middle initial when you registered to vote, that your signature on the petition will not be counted?
We don't know for sure. And we're deciding to err on the side of adding more information rather than less so they can distinguish you from somebody else that might have a similar name. Yes ma'am.
Have them, they can check.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she was just saying, yeah.
Well, online though, the middle initial isn't coming off. So anyways, that's... Like I said, we're deciding to err on the side of more information rather than less. So that's the real big information that we need people to know before they sign. Because we want every single signature to count. We know it's an uphill battle. And what we-
So how many signatures do you need? So how many signatures do you need and what is the cutoff date? Oh, hi Monica!
She's deciding to do a sign!
I only Facebook know you!
We have until August 11th to get the very, very last signature. That's the last day. So we have, we only had 75 days from the time that they approved it.
So that's when they need to be turned in, right? So we actually need them before that? Because we have to get them notarized.
Yeah.
Notarized, yeah.
So I can't remember the exact number that we absolutely have to have. It's like 182 and change, 183,000. But we want to make sure that we're gathering 220,000.
Okay. Okay, and then everybody asks me all the time how many we have. Does anybody know this?
Not enough.
That is, that's the right answer. I'm gonna start using it.
Yeah, sure. And every vote counts.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Hi friend! How are you? Good. Do you mind sharing with the people why you're here today?
I am here, I'm here because Governor Little needs to stop the madness. He's abusing his powers to become a dictator and basically he's become a tyrant. And I'm especially concerned with our parental rights. I don't want people coming into my house and taking my children and not informing me the right to a hearing. I think it's just horrible what's happening. And people need to show up because once things are past the point of no return, then what are we gonna do? We have to do it now. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much. Are you guys hearing this? I mean, this is the mama bear. This is the mama bear saying enough is enough. We're not gonna stand for this. We'll protect our babies. God gave them to us. All right. Here's the citizens gathering. Hi! Man, I'm having the most terrible service. I hope people can see it. So can you tell, I'm gonna hand you the microphone. Can you tell the people watching on Health Freedom Idaho Facebook page live right now why you're here today?
I'm here today because we're exercising our freedom of speech, freedom of assembly while we still have it. And we wanna send a message to Brad Little and everyone else that they're in office, not in power. We need to obey the state constitution and we need to lift the martial law and restore the balance of power. And we're here to hold our legislators accountable and we're glad for the legislators who are in session today doing just that. At the very least, there'll be a proclamation issued today to the governor to let go of martial-
And who is he or anybody else to decide who is or is not essential? Or what business is or is not essential? I'm gonna tell you right now, when the hairdressers couldn't be cutting hair, guess what? We all knew how essential they were.
That's right. We found out everyone's true hair color too.
Exactly right! As our roots were growing out, we were like, wait a minute. My hairdresser's essential!
And I have a family member who runs a salon. And now that we know there's going to be, what, back to phase three? She's saying, "I'm not going to obey that next one."
That's right.
We did it once, but we're not gonna be fooled twice.
That's right. Absolutely. I love hearing that. Because it isn't his right to tell us what businesses can be open. That is not his authority granted to him anywhere in our Idaho constitution.
That's right. We are citizens, not sheep.
Citizens, not sheep. Can you, hi ladies! Can you tell the people watching live right now on-
Care about freedom. I'm out to help our legislators because I feel they're frustrated with the governor. And so I'm here supporting them and in protest from what Brad Little is taking into his own hands. He needs to call the legislators back and do the work because he is using one or two special friends to only and not the ones who've been elected by the people.
That is so good. He's using his special friends, basically, to bring about his dictatorship here in Idaho and ignoring the elected, the elected by the people. I totally hear you. And I hear you also saying that you wanna support our elected in doing the right thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. I love that. You couldn't have said it better.
Very strongly I needed to be here today just to provide support to those that are trying to speak out of what's happening to Idaho. We are a constitutional republic. We follow the rule of law here. And the governor has not, in my opinion, he has not followed the rule of law and the balance of power in the government. And we, the people, basically, we are responsible for holding our representatives accountable and who we elect to represent and to guide and direct us. But he's become more of a dictator. And I agree with this. COVID-19 has been used as a tool to abrogate that and take away these essential freedoms that are guaranteed in the constitution. So I think the constitution is our solution. We need to constantly look to that.
Right. Amen. And you know what I'm hearing a lot today? Is that the constitution is a living and breathing document that should be changed and altered to flow with the times. What do you think about that?
No. No, the constitution is, it's our foundation for our nation. And if we abide by the principles therein, many of the problems that we have today would not be here. And be a limited government and people would have, well, the pursuit of happiness, liberty, life, all those things that were guaranteed and enumerated in the Declaration of Independence. We just have to return to our foundation.
Right.
And I think it has to become from the people. It's not gonna come from those unaccountable bureaucrats. We need to restore what a good government should be and that's to protect the rights of the people, right? And that comes from God.
And I love that because, oh yeah, and that comes from God. Because what you're saying is, every branch of government has their own authorities and powers, right? We have co-equal branches of government. Yeah, a balance of power. And we, the people, are supposed to watch over that balance of power. That is our job. Some people act like us gathering or holding our elected accountable is something that we shouldn't be doing. But in fact, as you stated, it is our job. It is our duty to do this.
That's right. And that's why like with the way the government set up, the legislators are voted in every two years. And that's to make them accountable to us. And if we don't like the government, it's our responsibility to change it.
Right. And I have to do this citizen journalism because we've got mainstream media here that doesn't report on us correctly. I would really love to be able to leave the reporting in the hands of reporters, journalists. But I don't get to do that because they don't report correctly. So here I am, a citizen journalist, taking it to the streets, interviewing the people, doing what these folks over here should be doing. This lady keeps driving by with her mask and let's just make sure. Yeah, so. I wish these people would do their job and have fair and balanced reporting. Instead, they have separated themselves from the citizens, wearing- They won't report on us fairly. They'll report on us as being crazy or trying to overthrow the government, which is nonsense and they know it. But it sells paper news, gets people to watch the news. But it's not really about the truth, is it? Too bad. Okay. Oh, thank you Kate. I appreciate that. It's not easy, right? It's not easy. They don't make it easy. They wanna call names and say awful things and try to discredit us and make us sound crazy. That's not what it's about. All right. We've got people peacefully assembling, exercising our First Amendment rights. And we're getting ready to go inside. And when we do, I'll go live again. I'll definitely try to keep you all informed. But if you can get down here, please do get down here. This really is our duty today. It looks like they've got another signature table. For the new people who have joined, because I did interview some folks over there. For the new people who have joined, tell us about what you all are doing.
So we are collecting petitions. We're collecting signatures to recall Brad Little today.
Yes. And what is the date that these signatures have to be turned in?
I believe August 11th or 7th. One of those days, 7th or 11th.
I think the 11th is the final date. But the 7th may be because you have to get everything organized and get some other things checked off the list, right? So you probably have a date in mind of August 7th so you can get everything else done.
Right. So 7th is, come and sign by the 7th of August.
Okay, awesome. And how many, do you know how many signatures we need?
So we need 186,000 and some change. But we're going for 220,000 just to make sure that we have all our bases covered in case they throw any out.
Can you tell me why it's important to you to recall Governor Little?
Sure. So, you know, I'm a native Idahoan and so I've seen what's happened in these other states and I don't wanna give an inch because I know what happens if we give an inch, they take a mile next. And so I wanna stop in its tracks before we become these other states that are just so far gone, people are fleeing. And I don't wanna flee.
Right? I don't wanna flee. I know. A lot of people have had to move here and it's heartbreaking, right? Because they've had to leave their homes, their family, their friends, the life they have built. The thought of having to leave the life that I have created here in Idaho would be devastating. It would be devastating to me. And somehow, they're picking up the pieces, moving their whole family, starting their whole life over again, something they never thought or even wanted to ever do, but are doing it out of necessity to protect their children.
Yes, absolutely.
You just did that? So tell me about that.
We just moved from California in September to escape the mandated vaccines because she has Down syndrome. And kids with Down syndrome can't process toxins the way other kids can. So she would literally die if she were to be, she could die if she were to be vaccinated.
So can you tell me about, were you able to get a medical exemption then? Because I know they've made that more restrictive. But I know what you're saying. It's essential that she does not get vaccinated because she can't detox it out.
And any kind of cognitive delay if you, every first side effect for vaccinations is encephalitis, which is swelling of the brain. So if she has any kind of cognitive delay with Down syndrome, that would just enhance it or just, you know, make it terrible. But we could not qualify for a medical exemption. They were not doing that anymore. And in fact, I was turned away by a handful of pediatricians. I asked them if they were supportive of families that don't vaccinate and they said, "No, we would ask you to find someone else." So we had, we had a wonderful, we saw Dr. Bob Sears. That was her pediatrician, who's a wonderful man against vaccines all the time. But we had to move, leave our family, our friends, her therapy group, everybody in California to come here to give her a better life.
Well, she's, oh, you're welcome. I love it. I love it. Thank you for sharing that. I really do appreciate that. Well, I'm gonna see what's going on. Here. Hi friends! How are you? I'm live on Health Freedom Idaho's Facebook page. Would, do you mind sharing with us why you're here today?
Well, whether Governor Little realizes it or not, he's following the communist agenda. This would be great from the standpoint, you're destroying the middle class. And Karl Marx hated the middle class.
He hated the middle class.
Absolutely. It's a dictatorship, the 1%, because it can control everything. And the big corporations are in favor of free trade, which Karl Marx was in favor of. He said, and he was also in favor of slavery. People don't realize that. So this is what we have now. Everything's been taken away. And we're at the point where the economy is collapsing and it's not gonna recover. And we're literally gonna have people that will be starving, I'm afraid, in the streets. And the communists have set up, they're going to come in and they'll- Now, I'm leaving Nampa because I'm afraid that these gangs will come up and they'll have, they'll start five fires and they'll try to burn down Nampa or up here. And the fire department wouldn't be able to stop them.
Right. And you have a good mayor in Nampa, from what I can tell. Are you, have you been happy with her?
Well, I haven't spoken with her recently. But yes, she's got a head on her shoulders.
Yeah. Right. Hopefully she protects her city. Thank you so much. I appreciate you both so very much. Okay, let's see what happens. Let's, hi! Let's head up the stairs here and see about getting in the doors. Hi friend! Good, how are you? Good to see you. Let me see what you got there.
Pitchforks with you, Darth Little.
You literally brought the pitchfork.
You know, it was an idea that my friend gave to me, so I'm gonna run with it.
I love it.
I'm literally running with it.
Yeah, don't aim that thing at me!
Don't run with knives, scissors, or pitchforks, children.
Thank you Mario! Here we go. Let's see what happens here. The doors are open to the people's house, as they should be. And the people are assembling. Let's go see how many legislators we have. Thank you very much. Muzzling our security, I saw. I didn't get him on film. I hope I didn't try to focus on him because he just looked embarrassed. I don't wanna shame him. It's not his fault. Gosh. Here we are at the beautiful Hi Joyce. Here we are at the beautiful Idaho State Capitol. Let's head upstairs and see where they have assembled. Trying not to make it too shaky so you don't get motion-
You guys are gonna have to close this and then the stairs and try to find a spot.
Absolutely, will do. People are assembling. Legislators are assembling. Be interesting to see if we get a senator here today. I'm hearing no, but I am holding out a small bit of hope for it. All right. Colton was calling me. Colton was calling me. Do you know where he's at? He's outside. You'll just let him know I'm in here? Hi, you made it! Tell us where you came from. I'm live on Health Freedom Idaho page. And what's your name? Melissa. And what's your name? Hi Caitlin, and you came from Coeur d'Alene. Look, Idaho is representing today. Oh, hello. Tell us about Hari. Where are you from Hari?
I'm from Santa, North Idaho.
North Idaho, represent! Awesome. Okay, what's the scoop Sarah?
So we are all heading up to the gallery in the House chambers. It is 8:41 and yeah, we're supposed to drop at 9 o'clock. So we are headed up so that we can witness history.
Yes.
Yes!
And what are you hoping, what history are you hoping will be made today?
I want to see the people prove that this is-
Let me see if they can hear you. I'm not sure. Let's do this.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to do this in the elevator. I can just stay out. This is a chance for the, for us to show. Oh geez, that's full. Sorry. This is all chaotic.
We should just go upstairs, huh?
Yeah, yeah, let's just go upstairs.
Okay, we'll go up the stairs and you can keep talking.
Okay, okay, we'll keep talking. Hi! So we are here so that the people can show that this is the people's republic, this is our government. And so here we are in our house. This is the Capitol. Hi Fred! We are here to show that when the people want their representatives to come and represent us, that's what will happen. So right now, we have a governor who's completely out of control and acting like a dictator. So we are here in the people's house in the Capitol to take back our government and restore ourselves to a republican form of government as we are guaranteed.
Have you seen any other states doing this?
No. In fact, I'm not totally sure. I heard a rumor that this is the first time in Idaho history there's ever been a full state lockdown and emergency declaration. And so obviously, this would be the first time in Idaho history that the people have pushed back on it.
Of course, we are the change makers and the history makers as we should be in Idaho. I called that from the very beginning. We are Idahoans and we are Americans and we will not stand down in the face of tyranny. I've been saying that from the beginning.
Amen.
Amen.
Love it sister.
Love it. It's just not in us to stand down.
No. No.
Oh, I guess I'm going this way. There they are, the lovely ladies. If you've heard of the Freedom Man Pack? That is the family. Oh, good, I can sit and drink my coffee. See what's going on? Hey, hey ladies! Can you tell me or tell the, tell Health Freedom Idaho, because that's where I'm at, on the Health Freedom Idaho page, why it's important for the people to gather today and especially why it's important to you all?
Yeah, so we just wanna come to support, we just wanna come to support the legislators who are willing to do the right thing, take a stand and really perform their constitutional duty.
That's right.
Yeah.
And this is your lovely daughter, right?
Yes. Hi mom!
You did good mama.
Thank you. Yep, just exactly what my daughter was saying. We're super excited there. Even though there's not a lot of legislators here, there are a handful that are willing to do their constitutional duty. We wanna support them. We want, we want the government to know that these, not everybody's in agreement with what they're doing. The tyranny that's being displayed by Governor Brad Little is unacceptable. And the proof of that are all the people that are showing up here today. So we're super excited.
Thank you so much. Here's what I love about these ladies. They're brilliant, they're smart, they're kind, and they're loving. They open up their home to people, host dinners. They're absolutely fantastic people and this is the face of freedom, y'all. Loving, kind. See? See the love here, y'all? Whatever they wanna paint us to look like, it's just not true. We love freedom and we love our community. We love our fellow citizens. We fight for your right to disagree with us, right? We obviously don't all agree all the time. But that's what our republic is supposed to be. So here we are. The citizens doing their job. Holding their elected accountable. Let's see who's here. I know I saw Heather Scott, of course, Representative Heather Scott. I saw Representative Zito. Saw Representative Chad Christensen. Representative Kingsley. That's who I've seen so far. Oh, I saw Representative Dorothy Moon, Representative Judy Boyle. It's been a little bit hard to keep tabs on everybody here. Do we know how many people we have here?
I'm not 100% sure, no.
It's been changing. Okay. Of course. I kinda figured some would either get braver when they saw the citizen support. Or wuss out. Yep. We'll find out who wussed out. We'll find out who decided not to represent the people today. And we'll let y'all know. It won't go unnoticed. I think they're saved. Are these all- Oh gosh. Here they come, the fake news. So let's just make sure. I'm just gonna keep going live because I just don't want to be misquoted. I don't want to be misrepresented. So I'm trying to be live everywhere we can. Well, yeah.
And they'll be believed. It's just how it is. It's always gonna be that way.
It's gonna be that way. I'm gonna have the documentation of what's true. Exactly right. Exactly right.
The ones with the muzzles on, because you know they're fake news.
That's exactly what I said too. She just said the ones with muzzles on, you know they're fake news. That's exactly right. And you know what? I feel like it actually is such a true indication of the way they actually have been muzzled. They really have been muzzled. They did.
They submitted to that, really.
And they're submitting to it now?
Yeah, they're submitting to it now. They're submitting to it still.
They're submitting to it still. So, yeah, we'll see. Well, we'll see. I'm definitely anticipating a lot of fake stories after this and a lot of just lies. There's gonna be smear campaigns against all the organizations involved. HFI, Idaho Freedom Foundation, the Freedom Man PAC, all... They're all gonna be smeared, of course, afterwards. There's gonna be tons of... What happens right here is gonna be twisted in a major way, and it's good that you're having documentation so you can at least prove otherwise.
I hear your dad. I hear your dad. There he is!
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we are asking you all to thank you again for being here. We're asking everybody to keep their voices down and be respectful to the legislators. Give them the opportunity to perform their duty. This is the gallery, and we expect that all of the gallery may remain respectful, quiet. So, we thank you again for being here. And we're calling you here to remind everybody to keep your voices down and compensate you a minimum. Thank you again for being here.
I don't know. Do you mind reaching out to him? He's calmed. He knows what he's saying. Can you pass my red cup, though? Can you pass my red cup? Where is it? No, I can move it. Oh, man. I can move down. Here goes, sweetie. No, 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 there's plenty of seats. There's plenty of seats for all of us.
This is really loud. I didn't see you last weekend.
Hey, hey, do I need to move down another one? Do I need to move down?
If there's a seat...
I think that... Okay. I don't know. Diego, we have a little bit of time. I'm live on Health Freedom Idaho on our Facebook page. Do you want to tell us? Give us a little reason why you think today is important, and especially why it's important to you?
Sure. Today is important because this is the... I just punched my daughter in the head.
No, it wasn't. It was just a tap.
That's how important it is.
Look, she's good. We don't want to say that on live TV. On live, basically.
It's already live, yeah.
It's already live, friend.
Already said it.
So, I had to show. She's in good form. Good form.
This is important because this is the first step in the legislature here in Idaho working towards reining in executive overreach. The governor here in the state of Idaho, I think everybody knows, has gone completely bonkers, and he's doing things that are completely illegal and unconstitutional. Unfortunately, the majority of the Idaho State Legislature has claimed that they are powerless to do anything about it. These legislators recognize that there is an opportunity for them to do something about it, and they're having this special legislative session based on the stipulations in the Idaho State statute that allows them not only to meet, but requires them to meet on the 90th day after a legally defined attack that we see in the Idaho State Constitution, actually, in the Idaho State statute. So, this is important because what these legislators here are doing is they're taking steps to ensure that not only are we free as a people, but specifically, I've got five children, and the law enforcement and our government officials will not be able to use Governor Little's executive orders to take my children away from me, or your children away from you, based on COVID-19 or any type of infection or things like this. This is a major step, even nationwide, for legislators to be taking a major step towards reining in executive power, which should inspire other states to do the same. So, we're definitely happy that they're here doing this, and it's a pretty important and historic day. I'm gonna punch my daughter one more time.
No, no, no. I'm showing her again. Safe and healthy. Okay, you guys, that was exactly right. I appreciate Diego. Diego with the Freedom Man PAC, in case you're wondering who the Freedom Man PAC is. Now, you know. He's awesome. He loves freedom, and I'm happy to be friends and cohorts in this momentous day. We've all worked so hard, you guys. This was not just a Health Freedom Idaho effort. This was Freedom Man PAC effort. Tom Muns with the John Birch Society. Ammon Bundy. We all worked very hard. Idaho Freedom Foundation has been helping as well. I see Fred Bernbaum up here. I love his analytical brain. So, we've got a little bit of time before they officially start. But I'm just gonna stay live so y'all can stay on with me. Stay live. Keeping it real.
Yeah.
I think it's important to recognize all the families and young children who are here today.
Yes. It's because there's a lot of mama bears that want to protect their children with these rules. In case you all haven't heard, under the State of Emergency statute, the governor suspended... Has been suspending some rules. I've heard it's over 200 rules. Well, the ones that caught my attention are the ones that have to do with parental rights. And as you know, I talk to people about what to do if CPS shows up at your door, and I've seen the stats. You know, if your children go into foster care, they're definitely... Most of the time, not any safer than when they stay with their parents. Even if they stay with parents who are abusive, they're more likely to go to prison later on in life if they have been raised in foster care than even an abusive parent. So, this is... And of course, we're not talking about... Look, the abusive children on all levels is wrong. On all levels, whether it's the parent or at the hands of the state. Abusive children is wrong and should never be tolerated in a free society. Shouldn't be tolerated in any society at all, but in a free society, we should be raising our children, and the community should be coming together to be sure that our children are safe. Knowing that they're not safer in foster care deeply concerns me that our rights have been suspended during this State of Emergency. The right to know where your children are, if they're removed by CPS. The right to see your child in person. Now, they try to say, "Oh, that's because under COVID, we can only have you visit your children with a Zoom meeting." No, that's not okay. When CPS takes your child, you haven't lost your parental rights, and the state is then acting as a dictator, taking your child and not letting you see your child. This is happening right now. These rules have been suspended right now. Oh, hey, guys. I've got some news. Hang on. Hold the phone. We've got some news. I'll try not to make you sick here. Yeah. No, go ahead and have Diego take it. Alright.
Where you going, girl?
Oh, hey, Attorney Colton Boils.
I don't think they're gonna go down there. Hi, how's it going?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Yeah. I need my badge. It's in my bag.
Oh, it's in your bag. I was like, I don't have it.
In my press bag. I have a press bag. I'm gonna give you that. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Hi! Are we?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, you guys, I'm trying to be quiet and maneuver through here. We are officially press. I loved saying that right as I walked by the MSM. Press. We are official press. So, we're going to... We are official press. Isn't that wild? So, if they try to kick us out of places, they can't because we are official press. And out here, we represent the Range Broadcasting Network, and this is our... I didn't know we were gonna just announce it on the fly, but it is new news. And so, we're headed downstairs to sit with the press and have a better view for you. Hey, hey. Press badge. Okay, here we go. I'm gonna turn you... No press pass?
Well, they're having a caucus, so we need to just wait.
Okay, we just have to wait. Okay, I'm turning you around. Oop, yep. Okay, so, let me see your press pass. Yes, ma'am, we are official.
We're legit.
We are legit. I need to put mine on myself. Well, we're new at this press business.
Well, that's true.
But we've had to become citizen journalists because the MSM isn't doing their job. So, we'll do the job.
The only thing is, is you're gonna be doing it right.
That's what the people need, is real news.
Real news, not fake news. We're here to be the real, truth news.
Yeah, let's see what happens with him. Okay, okay. Here we go.
It's a great question. I'm looking for a photographer.
Let's see Russell Sidney, two months in.
Is she there?
Yeah. You guys, please, can we... For press access?
Go in, go on in.
If you're pressed, go in. Yes.
Can you sit over there at that table? Or do we sit at it?
You guys can basically do what you want to do.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just do what you want to do. Learning our ropes as press. That one there?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go. Oh my gosh, you guys, this is so exciting. I'm excited for you, we the people, that get to have the view that they should have.
That's right. Perfect.
Get adjusted? I've even brought a... No, I'm in and out, for sure.
It's hard to get a signal in here.
Old arena, it's not that I'm special, my friend. We the people are special.
That's right.
And I'm just honored to... To give...
We're just willing to push our way in so that you guys have a front row seat.
Yeah, you're exactly right. So, we took matters into our own hands for you, and you know what? I'm gonna tell you right now, God has made arrangements for us that I could never have foreseen or orchestrated myself. He has made a pathway for us to give you the view that you deserve and a voice, and He's just inspired us to do what we do. I don't know, I don't get it. People are just like, "Oh, you're so brave. Have you heard that? You're so brave." I don't feel brave. Do you feel brave?
No, not at all.
No, it's not that I feel brave, I just feel passionate.
Somebody said yesterday, "You're amazing." And I said, "I'm really just mad." Like, honestly, like, I mean, I really am just scared for my kids' future, honestly. Like, I think it's the fear of, like, what they're trying to do to our country that motivates me.
Yeah.
Like, I don't ever want my babies to wake up and have this be a dictatorship that we're in right now.
Right?
Yeah.
Or have them taken by the government, where you don't know where they are because you tested positive for COVID.
That is my worst nightmare.
Right. And everybody was like, "Oh, no, that's tinfoil hat. That's not gonna happen." And then we saw a case happen in California.
Yeah.
And the judge upheld that the children could be removed.
Right.
Or child. I wasn't clear on children...
I think it was one child, yeah.
Child removed from parents. Even though the parents had a resource, a place the children could go, or child could go if they had COVID, right?
Right, for sure.
And the judge still upheld the removal of the child. So, it's not... We're not talking about a theory.
No.
Like, we're talking about it happening right now in our country.
Right. And that is my worst nightmare, is that knock on my door. So, that's what motivates me. That's why I got up this morning very early.
Very early.
Yeah, why we've been working on this for months. Like, today is kind of accumulation of months and months and months of research and work and trying to bring the people to their house to take back their government. And that's what we're here for.
Exactly right. We've got another citizen journalist.
Since you... She works for PBS.
No.
No!
She looks like someone on, I don't know, Public TV or something.
We're with Range Broadcasting Network. I know, right? Look at that.
We're legit.
Okay. Oh, look at the citizen journalists are lining up.
I know, I love it! Here comes Pam Hemphill.
Roberta, no, that happened in California, but seriously, the laws and the removal of the... Or, excuse me, the suspension of the rules regarding parental rights have set us up for the exact same thing to happen here. And that's why we are here today to end this State of Emergency so that the rights are restored to the people and we have a republic again. Old arena said Sarah Ann should have won over Rhino Fred. Amen, sister.
Oh, I know.
Amen, sister. The people would have been better represented.
It's a long process, but we'll get there.
Fred Martin isn't even here today.
No, of course he's not.
He's on vacation.
He doesn't represent us. I specifically asked him to come represent me, and he said, "Oh, call me," because he won't put anything in writing.
Call me. Classic.
Yeah, so, he's not here. He won't be here. He's a coward. That's what he is.
Ooh, he is a coward. I want to make sure that that was set. I want to move the microphone over here.
He is a coward. Somebody told him it's illegal and unconstitutional, the Senate leadership, that's who, told him. "You can't be here." And I said to Fred, "Maybe you should read the Constitution for yourself. Do you read? You should try it. Maybe think about it, interpret it for yourself. Don't just take someone's word for it."
Thank you for letting me know, Roberta. I just moved the microphone closer to Sarah, so hopefully y'all can hear us both.
Trying not to yell.
I know.
We're supposed to be quiet in the House chambers. Look at the people just lining in.
I know, you guys. Actually, maybe since we have...
9:05.
9:05, they're not in here yet.
Oh, Ben says he's watching. Hi, Ben!
Hi, Ben!
So, the representatives are out in the hallway, having a little caucus meeting and getting themselves ready and doing their business ahead of time. So, we are a few minutes behind, of course.
Well, since they're taking a few minutes, maybe I'll just show...
Yeah, should.
Show the people what it looks like here. Just make sure y'all are getting... Yeah. Oh, is that the racist corner? He's the extremist? Yeah, yeah, just kidding, because as you can see, you guys, you have to be able to see with your own eyes that we are loving, we love freedom, we love each other, we love our natural rights upheld by the constitution. And as you've heard from everybody today, everything we're doing is from a place of love. There's the people. Okay, they're coming in now, so I'm gonna get out of their way and let them do their business on this momentous, historical Idaho day. All right, let's see who's here. I need to address this somehow. Oh, good morning, Tom. Wish we were in Glanada. Wish we could see y'all. But I totally understand why you can't be here today. But you know what I know? These two are praying warriors for us today. And I appreciate that very much. We need it. Oh, how interesting. Look how they're gathering.
I know.
We gotta get a better view. Okay, see? He put on the big event in, uh, North Idaho. Okay? There we go. Sorry, friend, here, you wanna get your camera in here too? Oh, am I in your way here? I'll do like this. There we go. Okay. Representative Judy Boyle. Taking charge with the press. I do not see Tammy here, Courtney. There she is, I do see her now. Amen. So... That was awesome. That was powerful. Whereas, forty-six, one, zero, zero, eight, sub-two, Idaho Code, statesly part, the legislature by a current resolution may terminate a state of statutory emergency at any time. Instance one, whereas, the governor's office has, after numerous declarations of emergency, issued an emergency proclamation dated June eleventh, twenty twenty, suspending twenty-four Idaho statutes as well as various regulations. Whereas, forty-six, Jan. one, zero, zero, eight, sub-five, Idaho Code, upon which the governor's office rests its authority to suspend statutory law, specifically states that the governor may, quote, "suspend the provisions of any regulations prescribed, prescribing the procedures of conduct of public business." Whereas, such power over regulations is not disputed, but nowhere in the Idaho State Constitution or Idaho statute is the governor's office authorized to suspend or alter any Idaho statutes. Whereas, as one example, the governor's office has changed election law specifically to make twenty twenty primary dates, altering a statutory requirement for holding elections and having unilaterally changed the method of voting, causing great confusion resulting in disenfranchising of many Idaho voters. Whereas, as another egregious example, the governor's office has suspended Idaho Code seven, four, two, oh, three, thereby permitting the legislature from formally convening, and therefore is an attempt to silence, undermine, and marginalize the legislature. Whereas, the governor's office has exceeded its authority and violated the constitution's separation of powers provision by so suspending these and other Idaho laws. Instance two, whereas, Article three, section eight, Idaho Constitution states, "The sessions of the legislature shall be held annually at the Capitol on the state, commencing on the second Monday of January of each year unless a different day shall have been appointed by law and other times convened by the governor." Whereas, it is the determination of the sixty-fifth legislature that Article three, section eight, Idaho Constitution, does not work to restrict the legislature from convening under its own authority, is not a prescription for the legislature from calling itself to convene, but requires convening in those specified instances set out there. Whereas, the governor's office has exceeded its authority and violated the constitution's separation of powers provision, exercising powers properly belonging to the legislature deliberately preventing and avoiding legislative participation as required by law. Instance three, whereas, the governor's office has received on behalf of the state a one point two five billion dollar grant from the federal government to spend on COVID-nineteen related costs. And, whereas, the legislature has not authorized appropriation of any of these funds received from the grant. Whereas, the governor's office is relying on Idaho Code sixty-seven, thirty-five, sixteen, pursuant to the June eleventh, twenty twenty proclamation, defining non-congnizable the grant fund received, erroneously attempting to avoid legislative authorization of appropriations theremfrom. Whereas, sixty-seven, thirty-five, sixteen, Idaho Code, the statute upon which the governor's office relies for authorizing and appropriating said funds without legislative oversight, specifically reserves spending authority for the legislature solely by passing, quote, "Appropriation Act," end quote. Whereas, sixty-seven, thirty-five, sixteen, Idaho Code, in a, in addressing non-congnizable funds, constantly placing spending authority already appropriated by the legislature but non-congnizable at that time. Whereas, sixty-seven, thirty-five, sixteen, paragraph one, Idaho Code, specifically states budgets, pardon, pardon, specifically states regarding budgets, whether the appropriation is fixed or continuing, are fixed budgets beyond which state offices, departments, bureaus, and institutions may not expend. Whereas, categorizing this grant as non-congnizable under Idaho Code sixty-seven, thirty-five, sixteen, does not preclude such amounts from being included in the department's, bureau's, or institution's respective budget. Whereas, this grant is so large that it is almost certain that funds appropriated from this grant will result in surpassing each affected agency's respective spending authority, and therefore is unlawful without further appropriation authorization by the legislature. Whereas, the governor's office has exceeded its authority and violated the constitution's separation of powers provision by appropriating funds which cumulatively will likely exceed the spending authority of the legislature. Instance four, whereas, according to the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, and this is an independent news source, eighty-one point three percent of all COVID-related deaths were people over seven. And fifty-four point seven of the percent of the COVID-nineteen related deaths were people over eight, with no one under age fifty years old having died. Whereas, again, according to IDW, I'm sorry, IDHW statistics, a large portion of Idaho COVID-nineteen-related deaths occurred in long-term care facilities. Whereas, with the death rate so isolated and limited to a population already subject to other morbidities, the overwhelming nature of the emergency as described in June eleventh, the June eleventh proclamation is, if it ever was, no longer in existence. Whereas, the governor's office is now spending funds for putting into place a contact tracing mechanism not appropriated by the legislature, and most importantly, will severely impact the essential liberties of Idaho citizens. Further, given these statistics, it is an unnecessary expenditure. Whereas, the governor's office is now spending funds for COVID testing of Idaho citizens, and given these statistics, is an unnecessary expenditure. Whereas, the legislature has a constitutional obligation and affirmative duty to convene, and therefore must be acting to effectuate an emergency policy and must revisit the effective budgets of the departments, bureaus, and institutions, appropriation of which cannot wait until January twenty twenty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the sixty-fifth Idaho legislature must immediately be convening at an extraordinary session to address an emergency occasion by the actions of the governor's office to violate Idaho's separation of powers provision, and be it further resolved that the facts above reference constituted a constitutional emergency for which the sixty-fifth Idaho legislature must immediately be convening at an extraordinary session to address the purported suspension by the governor's office of Idaho statutory law, the emergency occasion by the governor's office currently expanding the budget of the variously affected state departments, bureaus, and institutions. An emergency created by the immediate availability of the federal grant funds and in particular regarding Idaho's receipt and expenditure thereof, be it further resolved that the sixty-fifth Idaho legislature, having sworn to uphold the Idaho constitution, must not fail said oath, nor fail its responsibilities for the citizens of Idaho, and therefore should, would be derriled in its duties if it did not immediately reconvene at an extraordinary session to address the state of Idaho's current emergency circumstances, dated today.
Okay, thank you very much, Representative Boyle. Reading this, uh, this is definitely how I feel. I took an oath to the constitution to defend and protect him, and when it is being violated, I think it's my duty to speak up. We have never had an opportunity to publicly say how we feel, and by our silence, the public thinks that we agree with what the emperor has done. He serves our power as an equal branch of this government. And I think we should just imply it and continue, and things in January will actually be able to change in. I don't think we will, I think by then things are going to be so far down the path. We have no idea what's gonna happen in November. Will you change election law again? Because nothing happened the last time, and I know for a fact, a lot of people, we disenfranchised. One, the older people, they didn't even understand, they couldn't go to a poll until they showed up and there was nothing there. They don't do computers and Facebook. Other people actually did apply, but they did not, one, ever receive their ballot, or, two, they received it so late that they couldn't get there, they mailed it, it was too late, or they couldn't go to their courthouse physically to get there. I mean, I had to have a friend take it to my courthouse, 'cause I couldn't walk up the few steps just to get there, and I wasn't gonna trust the mail. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from. Um, this is nothing about overthrowing government. I actually started going through the code, 'cause I was stuck in, in a bad recovery, and I couldn't believe that there wasn't some mechanism for the legislature to call themselves to meet office at a session. And I think our good representative pointed that out, that doesn't mean we cannot. We are an equal branch, we should not have to pay an executive branch to do our business. So I hope, uh, all of you will take turns and think about it.
You know, our, our constituents are what's important, right here, the people. And so us people and what we were doing, they were telling us, "And what's wrong with you guys? You can't, you're not getting anything done." Trying, trying to, trying to talk, trying to say what, trying to do whatever I can do, but it was next to impossible to get it done. And, uh, with the spending of these funds, uh, that belongs to the legislation, we're supposed to appropriate these, these funds. And now we've been kind of cut out of this thing, and that's a huge deal. Uh, as far as the emergency, I really appreciate what you put in here, because as an emergency, we went to our hospital, uh, up in Coeur d'Alene. We got a bunch of us, we went to the hospital, we went to Panhandle Health, and the hospital at, at that time had zero COVID-nineteen patients. Uh, they lost two hundred and twenty-one employees and, and sixteen million dollars at that point, and they hadn't had any COVID patients overnight, at all. And so I said, "What emergency is this up here?" And so, the, the, there can be spots, and there can be places that we need to pay attention to, but for the whole state, it was, in my opinion, uh, that should have, that should have went to all of us to be able to have a part in to say for our constituents. And so they need to know that we have tried to do our job, but for some odd reason, we, we have become, um, almost nonessential in this particular thing, if I can say it. So, it's, it's scary, uh, when you feel nonessential, when you feel you can't do anything, and your constituents are crying, they're, they're losing their houses, they're losing their jobs, uh, their families are, are just going through it. We have more suicide, we have more depre- more depression, we have more mental health, all these things are going down, and that's the emergency. So what's happening, in my opinion, is they're causing an emergency. And that's why we needed to convene to, to exercise our rights as legislators to be able to say, "You're causing an emergency here." We need to think through this, we need to get through this, get everybody together, even like today, that start discussing these things, and trying to make a difference to our constituents. We're blaming us for not doing our job. So, I, I want to thank you guys for, for showing and just wanting to talk through this a little bit, and what are we going to do? So, thank you.
When this all started, uh, my mother sent me a text, she and the governor put out this order, and I was, you know, I knew what happened, but I was, uh, very unhappy, I said, right away, I said something else to my mom. And she, we got in an argument. I love my mom, and I respect her. It's all ordeal, it's just, made me think about how unconstitutional so many actions are about restricting freedoms, and religious freedoms, the right to go to the store, the right to, you know, uh, to connect business as you see fit. Um, and I'm interested on this point to, to Representative Boyle, about separation of powers. Um, we are, our own separate branch, we have our own power, we're not that called, that beckoned will of, of the governor. Um, the Idaho Supreme Court has said, we are our own power, unless the constitution restricts us, we can do what we need to do, to connect business. They have said this. So I'm here for that reason, to do our own thing, stand against the governor and his actions. I'm, I'm just like the governor, he's a decent guy, I think, but, uh, we don't agree. I believe that his actions are unconstitutional, I'm here to stand against him, and here for the people of my district. Representative Caston here, um, sorry, I'm a Republican. High politics. He mentioned some things about suicide and mental health, and, you know, my district is suffering, and Fairleigh County has a lot of suicides, and it's upsetting. Businesses are suffering, farmers are suffering, matches are suffering, I'm here for them, here to fight for them, center for them, for their rights, but God gave advice to the free people and to connect business as they see fit. And to go to church, I have a pastor in Tetonia, Idaho, that said, emailed me and said, "Chad, I want to, our congregation to come and meet." We're upset, we want to meet, we want to worship God, praise God. I said, "Do it." Our first amendment protects that right, you have a right to do it. I don't care what this order says, you go and do it. So I'm here for that reason, just So I'm here for that reason, to stand for these rights, for my people and, thank you.
Well, I've seen things happen that I never dreamed we would ever see in this country. This is, this has been an amazing year. We've seen things that none of us could even comprehend. We've seen our Constitution suspended. This Constitution has stood through wars and crises, the Spanish flu, incredible number of people died. We're not seeing that in this. But we left here in May, we actually, no one really knew what we were facing. There was, we saw some weird things happening in China and so we didn't know and so we could have done things a little differently, looking back, we might have recessed and some things that would have been beneficial, but we didn't. And so here we are and now the basic purpose of government is to protect our constitutional rights. Instead, the government has taken away our constitutional rights. Life, liberty, property, those are basic to, to America and to Idaho and to our constitutions. What do we see here? We see life. We see people, every month typically, there are about a hundred fifty thousand people in this nation that are diagnosed with cancer. Once hospital care was suspended because of the preparing for this influx of people, people didn't see their doctors. These, these diagnoses did not occur. So a lot of people didn't get treatment. People are going to lose their lives prematurely as a result of this. Suicide rates are up. The list is long. There are a number of areas where the collateral damage for this is much greater than the damage that we're facing from what's happened in this, in this so-called pandemic. And so the reality is, we've taken life, liberty, my gosh, we've lost liberty even to this day, yesterday, we went back to stage three, people can't do things. And it's amazing. Liberty goes without saying. Property, people, if you're a nonessential business, you're told, huh, you're not essential, you're going to have to stop working, you're going to have to stop supporting your family. Your rent's still due, people are losing their business, they're losing their property. Our government has failed us and now that we have more data, the fact is, we should have rescinded, I mean, this emergency, emergency, emergency thing we got, so we, everybody took special powers and governors have gone pretty far. And I think we need to try to get our country back. And so I'm here to, my constituents are angry, North Idaho is a little different than some of the rest of the state perhaps, but we really were not overly affected. People went about their business, churches were suspended, there was some pushback on that and different things, but, but the fact is, we got to get our country back. Spanish flu a hundred years ago ravaged this country. Nobody thought about suspending the Constitution. We had wars, we had all kinds of things, civil war, all kinds of things. This country has survived a lot and suddenly our nation gave up our freedoms without even a whimper and I am stunned by that and very, very concerned. I'm concerned for the future of my children and my grandchildren in this nation because our Constitution has protected us for all these many years and suddenly it's on the ropes and, and we better stand up and get it back before we totally lose it. And there's so many things happening this year, none of us can predict where we go from here, but as a legislator elected by people in my district to, to support them and basically represent them in this body, I am here to do that and by and large, that's what my people are telling me, that why aren't you doing something? And we're, we, it's got to checkmate, I keep looking, what can we do? And so this was finally something that we could try to do and so here I am and I, I applaud my fellow legislators that are here, I know that others that are not here that would like to have been here and we need to stand up for America, our Constitution and what's right and so I let the chips fall where they will. Thank you.
You guys, please, wait till we end.
The United States Constitution guarantees each state the right to have a republican form of government only, not a dictatorship, not a monarchy and we as loyal citizens of our state and our country have been taught to respect the republic. Republic means rule by law, not rule by man or by a dictator. So we have to keep that in mind. So as loyal subjects, loyal citizens, we have been taught to obey legitimate law and I want to take us back to the very beginning of this so-called COVID crisis here in Idaho. I'm going to disregard the rest of the nation. At every press conference, public press conference that the governor has had in his office, you'll see a big four-foot by two-foot sign that shows two curves. One is a real steep rising curve and one that's shallow out. The whole intent of the emergency was to quote flatten the curve, okay? So everybody said, "Right, we don't want to have a repeat of what happened in New York City where they overwhelmed the healthcare capacity of the hospitals and patients were waiting to get on ventilators and they had to bring in ventilators from other parts of the state." That was all reasonable and a good reaction to an unknown virus that was affecting us here in the state of Idaho. However, if you look at the statistics for region one, which is the northern five counties, so Boundary, Monter, Cootie, Shoshone, and Benoit Counties, two states, we just had our first death last week or two weeks ago. We have had a total of eighty-nine deaths the last time I looked, so don't quote me on an incorrect number and focus on statistics that are wrong, please. Eighty-nine deaths, we are six times lower than the national average as far as infected fatality rates here in our state. We've been to Panhandle Health to listen to them. We wanted to make sure that we didn't overrun the healthcare capacity and I'm speaking specifically about region one right now. We had, as of a couple of weeks ago, five total hospitalizations for COVID at Cootie Medical, which services the northern five counties. Zero intensive care cases, zero ventilator cases, and this is a crisis? Now we look across the state line over to Washington and think how despotic they are and yet Governor Inslee allowed exemptions for counties that didn't have the same high rate of disease of infection as King County, Seattle, and some other high intensity areas. He allowed them to have exemptions to come out of the different, different phases of the lockdown, whereas here in Idaho, we did not have that opportunity. So believe it or not, in some respects, Washington had a more rational reaction to the COVID than the state of Idaho did. Most of the counties have not been impacted that way. So to treat the whole United States as if we're using New York City as a model is the same as treating the whole state of Idaho as if it were directed by Blaine County, Twin Falls County, or Ada County. Also, if you look at the model that the Department of Health is using, they have limited the number, they have set an artificial limit of about fifty cases of ventilators and/or intensive care units for the whole state. We have five hundred ventilators in the state, so we're down at ten percent. The excuse is, "Well, we don't have enough intensive care units." It takes about one day to convert a normal hospital room into an intensive care unit. There have been field hospitals with hundreds of beds set up all over the country, so this issue of, "Well, we don't have enough intensive care unit facilities" is bogus in my opinion. So I just want to let us, let everyone know that we have been following the directives from the governor's office and the Department of Health and Welfare as well we should have initially until we got some more information and data, which is what the Panhandle Health told us they want. We want more data, more data, more data. Now we're going into this tracing and contact and the issue is, we have hired two hundred contact tracers. We started with twenty-three before the COVID crisis, we have about two hundred and thirty-five now, two hundred and fifty, and yet we've only hired twenty additional Department of Labor personnel to handle the unemployment cases. I get calls and people crying on the phone, they've been waiting ten and thirteen weeks to see their first unemployment check for a condition the government caused in the first place and if they haven't had enough time in thirteen weeks to get that under control, we have a massive meltdown. They cause a problem and can't even fix their own problem and we're onto contact tracing for control. So I just want to make those comments and let people know where I stand on this issue. Thank you.
You know, district dates pretty easy to be physically distanced from everyone. Twenty percent of the state of Idaho, but yet the force service locked down the port. You know what this caused? Excessive utilization of the Hawaiians because of BLM didn't lock down the Hawaiians. You can go up to Salmon Rivers and find an open BLM outhouse, don't dare stop at a force service outhouse that's locked. But anyway, I wanted to tell you, tell you a short story about a gentleman who came into my business. I declared it essential business. And it really blows me away that your church pastor is nonessential, but the liquor store down the street is essential. I find it really funny. A gentleman in my store has a home camera and he's basically been unemployed. Now he's a doctor in Seattle. He does colonoscopies, lots of colonoscopies. He told me, he said, "Terry, I diagnosed on average of one camp per week, those patients are going to be detected." That's a statistical fact of a doctor that does colonoscopies in Seattle. I know that's true throughout our state. I have a nephew who's an emergency room doc in Texas. He'd been unemployed for two months. Emergency room docs are busiest docs, but what we do have, you hit on it, Representative Remington, was the increase in suicide rates. I said this in March when we were still in session. We were going to have an increase in suicide rates, we were going to have an increase in child abuse, we're going to have an increase in domestic violence. Many people aren't used to spending twenty-four seven with their spouse. I am. I've been married thirty-five years, worked up to the shoulders of my wife most of that time. We're used to seeing each other twenty-four seven. In fact, this, she really doesn't like when I come to this place. But we're just, I guess, different in that respect because so many people just aren't used to being so close together with their family. A lot of bad things have kind of happened here, but we need to do something positive about this. I think when we do come back in session, we can make some changes to our system and maybe bring forward a constitutional amendment that we can call ourselves back into session. We need to be able to make sure that the checks and balances of government are solid and in place from here going forward. I feel pretty frustrated today, I have many constituents that are nonstop calling me and emailing me. I understand, I get it. And I wish more legislators would have come today, there are many more who feel this is the way we do. We are not an isolated, as I read, right-wing bunch. We are constitutional legislators who took our overall office serious to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Idaho.
I'm going to sit way next to Terry as my seatmate, but we do represent very rural Idaho and we've taken hundreds of phone calls and emails over the past few months, a lot of brief, I mean, hours consumed with talking to men and women crying about losing their businesses. But you know, I'm going to talk about one specific issue kind of like Terry did too. They can open their businesses when they need to before they have to lock their doors. So what's happened is that three businesses opened in Idaho City and I won't name them, but Governor, if you're watching any of these press releases, please, please, do not threaten any of our Idaho businesses with fear of closing their doors by losing a liquor license, by losing their psychology license. Let's not add insult to injury. These people are afraid, they're bewildered, they don't know what's going on and this has gone on too far and I'm so proud of every one of you who showed up and a couple of them that are out there behind the doors that have made it in here. This is such an important moment that we have to help our folks. It isn't about us, it's not about the governor, it's not about the Senate, it's about you all and it always has been for every one of us in this room. So I just want you to know, and I'm pleading with you, Governor, please, the lady in the park, get the, get the AG's off of, off her back. Do not be spending tax hundred dollars to put Sarah Brady in jail. That's ridiculous. Do not be closing down our businesses, let our people sleep at night without knocks in their stomach, please. So thank you so much and everybody, sorry, I said a lot of the points I wanted to bring up and I appreciate every one of you for being here today. This is your people's house and I'm so glad you're all here. Thank you and don't clap.
But we want to clap, but we want to clap.
Thank you all for coming, this is amazing. You know, it's people who realize liberty, you know, what our life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, what our Constitution is about. I fear for our future. What's next? Is this going to be the new norm? It seems that we're all set up now that, hey, just stay at home and the government will give you a check. Well, that check is printed money borrowed that we have to pay back.
Representative Kingsley preaching to the people, I love it.
Look at this, isn't government great? Her, her grandkids are going to have to pay for that someday if we last that long. We, we have a serious issue here. I would not want to be the governor, I would not want to be in his shoes. He was damned if he did, he was damned if he didn't. He started out great, he, you know, he was fighting it. He was like, "We'll only expand this when we have community spread." He, he was great and then all of a sudden the switch went on and I don't understand it. You know, a lot of people are going, "Yeah, money." Well, I don't, you know, whatever, it is what it is, but it's time that we take back our government, we the people. I represent fifty thousand constituents and I know a lot of my friends here have helped out, the same phone calls, they've been horrible. I've cried on the phone with people. Why we didn't put a bubble around nursing homes when this hit will always boggle my mind. And let everybody else live and get some herd humanities, herd, you know what I mean? You know, so that's where we should have went with this, but like I said, I, I respect the governor and we're not here against the governor, we're here against the system and the system is what needs to be fixed. So God bless you all and thank you for letting me speak.
Project. Okay, I, I think it's important that as we go through this, we realize a couple of things. Okay, number one, what is the proper role of government? What does it do for us and what is it supposed to do for us? If I walk up to Chad, I grab him and I shake the crap out of him, is that my proper role? Am I supposed to do that? I think it's not, right? But your government should never do anything to you or for you that you would not directly do to your neighbor that is not the proper role of government. It is my job to keep myself safe, it is my job to weigh the risk, it is my job to study and to know what I face every day when I leave my house. The Supreme Court has already ruled with regards to the Second Amendment that our police officers have no constitutional duty to keep us safe. Their job is to investigate and to deter, but there's no physical way to say he, each and every citizen of the United States, state, county, city, or whatever government entity says. That's my job. Contact tracing is the most unconstitutional thing I've ever seen or heard of in my life. To be able to come into my home and say that because I've been exposed to a virus, you're going to take my kids, give me the break. Now I'm so proud of these legislators that have showed up here today. Maybe we can reconvene, maybe we can't, we can get a legal opinion that will say almost anything we wanted to say depending on who you ask and how you frame the question and that's what we have. I think I've read five so far and they're all different, all different opinions on the same code statute. Bottom line is, as legislators, the way it stands today and the way it appears today, the only person who could call us back into session is Governor Brad Low. Governor Brad Low has taken the lead, he's made the decision, he's formed his own advisory committee that does make his voice most of the people in this state of Idaho. The buck stops there. We did everything we could, we showed up like we told our people we did. We've been here to be your voice, but the bottom line is this, it's my job to take care of you and your family. It's your job to take care of me and your family, it's not your government's job to protect you. You weigh the risk. Every time I get in my car to come to Boise, I have to go up Campbell. It scares the crap out of me. By half the time I go on the back roads because I want to go up Campbell, heard horror stories, I know people who've been killed in accidents on that. But when I get in my car to come up here to Boise or wherever, I weigh the risk. But when I get in my car to come up here to Boise or wherever, I'm like, I weigh the risk. And then I make the decision what I want to do. Because I live in the United States of America where my rights are guaranteed, my God-given rights are guaranteed to me and protected by the Constitution and are supposed to be protected by the legislators that I have voted to represent me. So I thank you all for being here. Proud of the legislators for being here. Hopefully, when we reconvene in January, we get settled down.
I'm going to start with a Bible verse, Proverbs 11, 11 and 14. "The good influence of godly citizens causes a city to prosper, but the moral decay of the wicked drives it downhill." And verse 14, "Without wise leadership, a nation is in trouble; but with good counselors, there is safety." And I've just felt convicted. I'm from, obviously, North Idaho. And we read the Constitution up there. And we know that this is unconstitutional, these edicts, and we're not enforcing it. Our sheriff will not enforce what's happening. Our citizens, it's just like business as usual up there. But that being said, they're always worried that government, with its heavy hand, is going to come in, pull a liquor license or pull a business license or, you know, state police calling you over asking you where you're going. So I felt like it was my duty to be down here because I just represent my district. But I can't imagine any other legislator in this state who is not hearing the same things from their district. Maybe downtown Boise because we know it's a different world down here. But in, I cannot imagine one other legislator. Every legislator should be here today because we have, our state is out of control right now. And we are, we about lost the republic because of a self-appointed tyrant. And basically, seven-edicts changing things every day. And the governor, the executive branch is supposed to be enforcing our law, not making up their own law, not getting money from out of the state and creating programs and divvying it out to who he or she chooses. That is the job of a legislature. We are supposed to be appropriating that money so we can all represent our districts and say, hey, here's what's going on in my district. We need this for this. It is unthinkable what has happened. I just pulled up some statistics. And in 2017 to 2018, there were 101 deaths from the flu. Did we shut down that year? Did we hire contact tracers to start tracking people and telling churches they could not meet? Are you kidding me? 101 deaths, we've only had 89. And who knows if those were even COVID-related? Because right now, there's an incentive that everything's COVID-related. So I'm just disturbed at how out of hand it's got. And I'm disturbed at our leadership, who has intimidated legislators from being here. And our horrible media, who basically has tried to reframe the narrative that we're here to do this or we're here to do that. We are here to represent our people. That's why we're here today. We are here to open our businesses, to get the government and governor off their backs and do business as usual. And I fear the longer this goes on, the more and more we're going to lose everything we've had. And I truly believe a civil war is coming if we do not put an end to what we're seeing. And that's why I showed up today because we have got to be a voice for the people. And to have one person come into our state who is taking their orders from the CDC and international groups and the Western Governors Association and the National Governors Association. And when I sit on a conference call, and most legislators don't even want to show up to those conference calls anymore because the governor gets on there and he gives out everything he's doing. And he's like, do you have any questions about what I'm doing? It's, that's out of control. That is not the way a republic works. And so I think it's sad we don't have more legislators here. I think we have a duty to stop this nonsense. I think the people have a duty to stop this nonsense. Unfortunately, we don't have more people here with us, more legislators, because the people have not paid attention to who they've elected into office. And that is critical that we need to really look at the people and say, are they here? Are they representing their citizens? And if not, why are we not recalling them along with the governor? So those are things that I think we need to discuss as a body. We need to rein in what's happening. I've got so much to say. You know, legal opinions are a dime a dozen, a dime a dozen. And that's the difference with the legislative branch. We get to write the law. It doesn't matter what the opinions are of the courts. We get to write the law. And that's how it's supposed to work. So for any one person to say otherwise, I just cannot believe the guy has, really, I can't believe he has had the guts to do what he's doing. And so he's obviously being controlled by someone. I don't know who that is. But I really think we need to reconvene, get back on track here. And I think we need to look at this money. Because now that this whole problem has been created for our state and people are homeless and people can't open their businesses and people go to their businesses, now the governor's going to come in and tell him how he's going to make it all better? And he's going to give them money and hand out money like candy on Halloween to these businesses? And does he think those businesses aren't going to remember this in a few years? So I just really think we need to look at where we're spending the money. I think it's ridiculous. And I think we really need to return to session. And I think since I've got the floor, our leadership should not be intimidating us or bullying us to not meet. It is unthinkable that you, as leadership, will not join us today and will not push back on letting us do our job. You're supposed to lead us as a body to do our job. We cannot do our job. We cannot rein in an out-of-control governor when we can't even get ourselves back into session. And we know the relationship there between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And those roots go deep. And that needs to be broken. Thank you.
Amen.
Judy, thank you for Representative Boil. Thank you for putting this together today. And to the citizens of Idaho, thank you for coming and showing your concern and your support. I've been asked, why are you here? Because I've had constituents that have contacted me and said, Representative Crane, we are very concerned with our state and where it is headed. And we would like you to go to Boise as an elected representative and make our wishes known that this is not acceptable. I'm very concerned that churches have been shut down, schools have been shut down, and businesses have been shut down. On the first of April, my brother and I bought a business. And I remember sitting in that business on about the 10th of April and realizing that one individual can make a decision to tell me whether I can go to work or not and to tell my employees whether they can go to work or not. I would submit the argument that our founding fathers did not fight a war for that to take place. They fought a war so that individuals could have freedom. But I look at this crisis as an opportunity for us in the future. What are we going to do? What is the 2021 session going to look like? Well, I can tell you from Representative Crane's perspective and from my district's perspective, we are looking at legislation that businesses could have some predictability when this type of crisis strikes. That maybe your license cannot be suspended. That the government cannot come in and tell you, we're going to shut down your businesses. That churches could have some predictability. That educators will know how they're supposed to handle these types of crises. And as a legislative body, we will know how to respond to this crisis. The ability to call ourselves back into session. This is a big problem the governor's trying to get his arms around. Proverbs says that there is wisdom in the multitude of counselors. Bringing the legislature in to help make decisions that affect the state on a statewide basis is very important. If legislation gets vetoed, should we have the ability to call ourselves back into action? So I see an opportunity here, even though it's been frustrating. Our citizens are weary, they're concerned, they're scared. But we, as leaders, have an opportunity to step forward in the 2021 session and say, you know what? This is not going to happen again in Idaho. We can position ourselves in a good place to make sure that our citizens can know with certainty and predictability that their business can be open, that they can go to church and worship God, and that their children can go to school. So thank you all for coming today. And Representative Boil, my fellow colleagues, thank you for being here. Those colleagues that could not be here, I'm sorry that you couldn't be here today. I understand that, but this has been great. Thank you.
All right. I'm Representative Nichols, and I come from Pannion County. And I am so glad to see so many here today. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate all the time and effort you've put in to get this put together. We've had a lot of talk over the last several months before we even got out of session on what we were going to do and how this is going to look. And I don't think anyone can predict. I'm still waiting for zombies and aliens to come. So I'm just saying that, you know, that's just out of the limit right now. It's like, but anyway, I just really wanted to stand here today. I came here today because I'm here to represent my people. And it has already been spoken of that so many of us have heard from our constituents, from the people in our areas, and how concerned they are with what's transpiring. And yes, we do. We all feel like we're nonessential to some extent because we have no way to be able to grasp. And there's no hope, and there's nothing that's given to us to be able to say there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We just continue going down this road, and it's like a roller coaster ride, ups and downs, and lefts and rights, and loops and everything in between. And so I have talked to people. I've had the same experience with people's businesses being closed, people not being able to get their unemployment and wanting to know what they can do, trying to call, trying to give them hope and incentive and the ability to know that, you know, things are going to be okay in the end. But I've gotten to the point where I just started to feel that myself. And getting on the calls at the governor's office has been an interesting experience for me, where you sit on there and you're muted, you have no way to be able to say anything, and you are just told, you're patted on the head, and you're told to continue to support the governor and to support the effort and to tell everybody around you to do the same thing. But in your heart and hearts, you know that that's just not where you're at. You're done. You are done with the whole shebang. And it just feels like that there's no end in sight. And so I have been on those phone calls with people, trying to help them and trying to give them direction and guidance. And I don't even know where to send them anymore. I don't even know what to do for them anymore because I have nothing at my disposal to be able to help them. I've used up everything that I know, and there's none left. And when that happens, there's no hope. And when there's no hope, we see what's transpiring throughout our nation with people rioting and looting and destroying property and turning down statues because no one has any hope anymore. And I think that's a sad thing. You know, they tell you that there's been no civilized nation that's lasted longer than 250 years. And we're getting to that point. And I'm worried for our posterity and for the generations that will yet come. Because what are we going to be leaving them? What are we going to be able to tell them? Are we going to be able to look at them and tell them that we did everything that we possibly could to try to save our nation, to try to keep our republic, and to try to hold those things that are dear to us, that we know have been sacrificed? There's been so much sacrifice that's been given to be able to have what we have today. And I fear that that is all going to be lost and lost in vain because we're not standing, because we're not doing the things that we know that we should be doing and fighting for our rights. Liberty and rights do not come easily. We're fought for every single day. And the actions that we take now are the things that will impact our future and our future generations. And so I just want to stand here and thank everyone for coming and for doing those things and for being involved and for paying attention. You know, I tell people all the time, people will tell me, I have no desire for politics or government. And I tell them, you know what? That's unfortunate because politics and government affect everything that you do in your life every moment of every day. And if you don't pay attention and do something about it, then you're going to reap what you've sown. And that is what we are seeing now. And so I just want to conclude that I am here to represent those people that are in my area, not just those people, but throughout the state. And we now know that there are changes that are to be made. And there are things that we need to do to be able to right these wrongs that we are going through. And we need everyone to be involved in that. It's not just us. I'm one person. Representative Crane is one person. You know, we're all one people. We can't do it alone. We need people to be able to help us and to support us and to give us the direction and to tell us what they're needing. And yes, the government cannot take care of everything for you. That is your personal responsibility. And if we turn over our responsibility to one branch of government, then we are legitimately saying that we are nonessential. And that is not how government was set up to be. There is a balance, and there's a reason for our balance. And our founding fathers knew exactly what we needed because they studied. They studied all the governments throughout the history of time up until the time that they were present and to see what was going to work. And Mrs. Powell was the one that came to Dr. Franklin and said, sir, what type of government have you given us? And he said, a republic, if you can keep it. And that is where we were at. And so I thank you all, and I thank you for your time and all of us.
I'm going to break protocol now. On the House floor and in the Senate, you're not allowed to debate or present for the second time unless everybody else has been given an opportunity to speak for the first time. But I've got to emphasize what Representative Nichols said. I have a sign hanging in my office, and everybody that's been in there has seen it. It says, "The price that good men pay for indifference to public affairs is to be ruled by evil men." Amen? Socrates, more than 2,000 years ago.
Amen.
Because I was just adding, just as an example. Our church tried to stay open. And because even while the legislature was still going here, I said, you guys, this is a test. This is a test. We got to pass this test. And went back, told the board, told the church, we're going to stay open. See what happens. Our sheriff, our police department said, we're not going to come by and arrest you anyway. And it was, I could not believe what happened. People from all over the state, because they noticed our church was open. We had people that called the governor. They called everybody, and the media blasted me. I made it from here all the way to the New York Times. And the media just talked about how, what was I doing? I was going to kill Port LA. And I had 171 emails, count them, that basically said that they hoped my wife and I and my children caught COVID and died burned in hell that went around. Now, the problem is, is a lot of them believe what's going on. They believe in this. They believe that this is a real emergency. They've been told this so many times by media. They've been told this by Fauci. They've been told this by, you name it. We went and grabbed the specialists. We talked to them. And they all said, it's not what everybody thinks it is. And so it was, I made a conscious choice because I do not believe that Americans are stupid. And I believe that we can do what is right, what is just, and what is proper. But because we didn't close the church, we scared a lot of people. People are running on fear. And from what Representative Dammier said, it's fear. It's not love anymore. And I think we've lost our vision for what truth really is. You can make up whatever truth you want. But in my opinion, there's one truth, and that truth has a name, and his name is Jesus. And if we stick to what he said and we have peace to do just what is right, to speak, get along with each other, get along with our governor, get along with whoever, but yet speak the truth like we're doing today. That's all we're doing, is just speaking the truth. We've tried. We're doing our best, and we will do our best. But it's up to God to work through people to be able to make a change in this nation because this nation is being ruled by people that don't care about the people. And we do.
Amen.
And if we don't make God... And if we don't make God a part of our life, to be able to help in the counsel that we're asking for, what counsel? The multitude of counselors, who are your counselors? Are they counseling truth? Or are our counselors, because I believe that our governors are being ruled by the WHO telling the CDC, the CDC is telling all the doctors in letters that we saw, that says now our ILI incidents, or our, our influenza-like incidents now can be labeled, this is science now, can be labeled as COVID-like incidents. It's influenza, it is not COVID, but they've been allowed to do this. That is a lie. And that is no longer the truth. But they've been told by people that this is what they can do. Our job right here is to be able to establish good law so our people don't have to go through this. This, in my opinion, is more than an overreach. And I'm very concerned. I am not running again, you guys know that, nor do I want to run again. I don't want to die and burn in hell. But the people that are are going to walk right into a mess. Because now, when you go in, hopefully, they don't fly another missile right over the bow of our boat in, in, in the fall to mess us all up. Because if you do, guess what? You are still a branch of the government and you still meet here. And you get here and you pass those laws to protect the people in this state. I love you all, and it's been a great, great, uh, it's been a blessing to serve among you. And I pray for you all.
Looks like we're losing a good one, I hate that. We want to keep men like him.
So, I'm here to represent my people. But I think the problems that this pandemic has brought on our state and our nation is very serious. I don't think we can wait till January. We don't have any idea how many horrible things can happen between now and January. And so, by my businesses and the people's ask me to show up for this meeting, they want us to find some way to legally get our session going. And I think it's finally important we get a session going. Of course, want to be legal about it, I want to consider whatever it takes. If, I, I see, I read two sides, legal arguments, pretty intense legal arguments, both ways. So, if the only solution's a court case, well, I even think we ought to go there. But I think we shouldn't let down till we, till we've tried to get into session and do something about the problems that we see in our local areas all across the state, not just let it be run out of ways here or one branch of government. So, anyway, I appreciate everybody's come too, and from the constituents to the legislators. And I just hope we will not give up and take action because January's too far away for what all can go wrong.
Well, I hate to jump up again, but, um, and usually I don't speak a lot, but I do have stuff to say here. And I think that something that Representative Nichols said cannot be overstated. We, your representative sitting in this room here, we understand what it means to businesses to be declared non-essential. We have been declared non-essential, she made that point, and that cannot be overstated. We're trying to become relevant, and this was, but the, basically, the way of telling the, the state and the world that we need to be essential, we are essential, we're chosen by the people, we're the closest body to the people. So, um, we need to become essential if we have been labeled unessential. And there's one other point that hasn't been made here today, that when we left in March, I told people, I said, you know, we're going to have to come back in a special session in June because the budgets are going to be blown up. And still, no one's talking about this. But the stuff I read, we get all these emails, and 8% to 14% reduction in revenues. Basically, that's state to state, it varies for different states. And you cannot shut down a major percentage of your businesses and a, and a organization that gets their money like the government does from taxes and commerce and different things that they put a stop to, and continue to spend the same money you have. So, our budgets are blown wide up. At 10%, we would be $400 million short from what we spent, um, back in March. We all voted on this. Um, we have to come back and address those budgets. If we do not do something, um, by the time we come back in, in January, uh, we're going to be in serious financial trouble. Idaho's fairly strong, we prepared for this, we had almost $400 million in a rainy day fund, preparing for something like this. But, uh, we don't want to spend it all the first year, this is going to last a while, it's going to be, uh, some businesses are not coming back, some estimates are 40%. The businesses that were closed down are not going to be able to survive this, which makes perfect sense. You take a business that was marginal, they're done. Business, some businesses were successful, after you shut them down for too much, you're, you suddenly become a business that can no longer function. So, um, you can't expect this to end well. And so, um, we have to do that as a result of, of, of reaction to what has happened. But, and I am surprised frankly that we have not been called back to extraordinary session. The governor has all the cards in this deck, and, and basically, he can declare what we come back in session for. And I can't believe he hasn't been discussing bringing the legislature back to revisit those budgets because they're not going to work. And, and, uh, I haven't heard anybody talking about this, but believe me, there will come a time very soon when this becomes front and center because the money is not there.
One last thing, uh, I'm sitting on this floor before I've been so touched up to date. The spirit of God is here for me today. All of you are in mission for God, all of us are in mission for God. Liberty comes from God. And we'll fight for it as long as I'm in, in office. And all of us here will, I believe, too. I want to thank you for being here, we're here for God, we're here for everybody in this state of Idaho.
Amen.
Amen.
I'm Priscilla, again, District 7. I was not going to speak, but now I am here and I'm the only one that has not spoken. So, I'm getting the elbow nudges, so I have no prepared remarks. And I can tell you, it is an honor to serve with every one of these representatives. I mean, just listening to them speak, they have more worth of wisdom than anything that I could ever say. And the only thing that is left on my heart as we slowly depart today is the word of freedom. So, for those of you that don't know, in my former life, I was an A-10 pilot, an MC-12 pilot. And there's one thing that I did spend a lot of time doing, and that was 1,000 hours of combat flying over Afghanistan, watching and surveilling people who did not know what freedom was. People who lived in fear. And people who lived under terrorism. Because terrorism is the absence of fear. And the common theme that's running through all of this is we fight for the type of government and which rules and laws are being enforced, is that we have fear. Why are there legislators in the hallway? Why are there legislators at home? Why are there people not going out? Why are there people not going to the park? Why are their mothers, I, I have two, under two years old, contact tracing? If they were to test me and I have something, they can take me away from my kids. Like, that's fear. And it's, the absence of freedom is fear, and that's terrorism. We're being terrorized in our own country and our own emotions. And to me, that is unmerciful. And so, what can we do? We're here, we're trying, but all we can do is pray. And every night, my husband gets on his knees with me and we pray. Because there's only one thing, the verse that I have that comes to my mind, where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom. And that's the only way we can get our freedom back. And so, thank you to the honored listeners, thank you for being here. Keep fighting, we need freedom, we need the Spirit of the Lord. And Pastor, will you please close us in prayer, and then we can all depart?
We would love for everybody that is here to continue to pray for us, pray that we all do the right thing. We want you to see our hearts. We want you to see how much we love this country, how much we love you. Even though our hands are tied, and we get the, the bad forks, we get the, the flat fork, you need to understand that we're trying to do our best to be able to make sure that you're free. So, let's power heads. Father, what a privilege. With all these people, what an honor, Lord God, that you come to your presence and ask you, Lord God, please, today, will you please bless Idaho? Give us the ability, Lord God, to lift up the name of Jesus. To keep our churches open, to keep our businesses open, to keep our families from harm. I know that the day that somebody comes in, in Port L.A., and walks to take their babies away from their moms, I will have 1,000 people outside of their house. And I ask, Lord, because we can have all faith. And yet, faith without works is dead. And so, I pray, Lord God, that we all start putting our works where our faith is. Our faith that we have is in God. Our faith that we have is in God's people doing the right things. And so, I pray, Lord God, that we as legislators and the people that are in this room, I pray, Father, that we would be able to go out, Lord God, doing what we have the right to do. We have a right to defend our property, we have a right to defend our families, we have a right to defend our businesses. And yet, a simple word shut the state down, a simple word shut the nation down. If Fauci says we're in trouble, then everybody quits. That's not what this nation is. There's people, Lord God, like one of our representatives, flying over territory, trying to do their best, fighting for our country, fighting for our freedom. And I ask right now, Lord God, as they fight the fight, we have been instructed biblically to fight the fight. And there is no greater love than when we lay down our life for praying. And so, I pray, Father, that you will give us the energy, give us the Spirit of God, and make sure, Lord God, that you guide and direct every legislator that is here and every legislator that is not here. Guide our governor, may the knowing power of the Holy Spirit be over his life and on our, on our lieutenant governor also, Lord. And make sure, Lord God, that they hear the voice of the Lord, that they have the conviction of the Lord. And make sure, Lord God, that they lead Idaho, this great state. And I don't care what the rest of the nation is doing, although I'm very concerned, our jobs right here for Idaho, let's be the example of how we use common sense and the Spirit of God to be able to do the right thing. And today, as we dismiss ourselves, Lord God, we just want to thank you for being in our presence and for being in our lives. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Just want to point out what a beautiful time. Beautiful prayer, beautiful hearts.
Very moving.
It was amazing. Okay, I'm going to switch this around, and then, um, is there anything you want to say? Some highlights and some points about what was said today? I mean, I guess they decided not to use the, uh, attack statute.
Right.
And be able to have a vote today without a quorum.
And, um, it looks like it was just a proclamation, they did not actually write a resolution, um, because they are afraid that this was not, would not be considered a valid session. So, that's a little frustrating. Um, I believe the reading of the law says that they can call themselves into session, and they could have written that resolution and our emergency declaration. I mean, I think they're trying to be cautious right now. Um, and have today be just a really strong statement to the governor's office, um, that the people will not be ignored, our representatives are here doing what they think they legally can do to at least start the conversation.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm proud of everybody that was here, and I really appreciate them, and they all spoke beautifully. Um, I am a little disappointed, though, that there was not a resolution. I think there should have been a resolution.
I feel exactly the same. Um, I was disappointed right away when she said that they didn't have a quorum because then I knew that they were not going to be using the statute, the attack statute that says that they can vote on a resolution, they can end this, the state of, terminate the state of emergency, um, without a quorum. And so, um, but I also understand that they are under immense pressure. Top-down pressure.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm hoping, I heard some people say that this is just the beginning, they want to reconvene.
Yes.
It sounded to me like, if I'm reading between the lines of what was said, that some people feel that they can't vote on a resolution under the state of emergency, and they, they feel like they need a quorum. And I hear other people saying, we need to reconvene and we need to handle this.
Right.
So, just like the rest of our state and our nation, of course, we're divided on the most important issues.
My Diego.
Diego! Look, I'm trying to think! And say the right thing! Um, so, I felt that there was a little bit of a disagreement even amongst our elected who are clearly here with good hearts and good intentions and, and passionate for the people that have elected them. But I think the disagreement comes in on how best to move forward. I think people are afraid of lawsuits. They're afraid because they've been told by leadership that, um, they're breaking the Constitution.
Right.
And so, these threats have them also nervous, and they hold a great position.
Right.
So, so that we, we have to, like, reset. We, the people, have to reset.
Yeah.
And know that we're going to, we'll get the list of the names here. Those are our, obviously, the ones that care to represent us, they're on the front lines. They just put themselves on the front lines.
They really did, it was extremely brave to show up.
It was extremely brave.
They've had a massive amount, from what we've heard, a massive amount of pressure from the top, that they would be punished, they would be denied chairmanships, they, all these threats and all these things and all these labels of extremist trying to overthrow government. This is, they are our government.
It's ridiculous.
There is no overthrow. Um, so, for them to be here today and to sit on the floor of our house and to say the things that they said is extremely brave.
It was brave, so...
And I really, Chad, a lot of them said, I feel God's presence here, and I, I really felt it.
Yes.
Um, and I honestly, truly believe this is the beginning of the people's wave of returning ourselves to freedom.
Right.
I mean, I wish we could have accomplished more right now, right here today. But I really feel like the energy in this room was, we're done, we are ready for our freedom back, and we will restore our republic.
The proclamation hasn't been printed and posted anywhere yet. They just read it just literally an hour ago. So, it will be out, and I think that you will be very pleased with what the proclamation says.
Yeah.
Um, I was as they read it, I haven't been able to lay eyes on it, but as they read it, I, as it was being read, I was like, yes, yes, the whole time, yes, yes, it had to be said. I'm really glad that contact tracers were addressed today.
Yes.
And the fear that we live in as parents, that, um, you know, that a contact tracer can show up at our door, say you have COVID, and remove you from your child. I mean, that's not, that's not a conspiracy theory. That is the way the laws and the being, this, the rules being suspended are set up against us, against the parents.
And the money is being spent that way.
Yes, and I was really glad that they brought it up, like, they don't agree with the money being spent to terrorize Idaho citizens.
Right, absolutely.
So, I think as we sort of, we will have to, you know, have some meetings, figure out where we're going from here. But my heart says, just off the cuff, first and foremost, we need to thank every single elected official that was brave enough and passionate enough for the people to be here today.
Absolutely, we need to... Absolutely. We need to pour over them with support and love.
Yes.
Because they are the ones who actually, when they took that oath, they took it seriously. And they are here to uphold it and to actually represent the people.
Yes.
And that is huge because there were 15, I think I counted.
Yeah, me too.
Out of 105. So Idaho, just so you know, there are 15 of our representatives that actually took their oath to the Constitution seriously. And we need to have some serious ongoing discussions about the other ones that weren't here.
And they are going to take a beating from the press.
Oh, yeah.
Mark my words, the mainstream media, the fake news with all their masks on all over the place.
Can you believe they're smart and pretty? Isn't it amazing?
Thanks, Diego. It's, it is on Health Freedom Idaho's Facebook page right now. We're live. And then we also do have a YouTube channel, yes. Health Freedom Idaho.
Would you go under, on YouTube?
Health Freedom Idaho. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So.
Anyway, they are going to take a beating from the press.
They're going to take a beating.
You guys, the people, need to be louder than the fake news.
You do. You really do.
Pour over them with support and love.
Yeah.
And overcome the fake news.
Yeah, bring it. Really bring it for them. Show their support. And when you show that your support for them, that will show the other legislators that maybe they can step up too.
That's right.
Right?
And that they should.
And that they're supported and that we're going to run cover for them.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's what we need to do first and foremost. Run cover for support and love on the ones that were here. Demonstrate to the ones that were not here that we, the people, will support them.
That's right.
But the next thing that we have to do is educate our legislators as to how they get back here and terminate the state of emergency.
Yes.
Because we've done the research and it's clear in the statute. So we will get some information together and put it into your hands to educate your legislators as to why they can terminate this state of emergency.
Yes.
That is the crux of the issue.
Yes.
That's what everybody's disagreeing on and why they are obviously willing to say this is wrong. They don't like it. It's not right. They feel their hands are tied. But from the way we've seen the statute and other attorneys have also interpreted it this way, they can indeed.
Yes.
So let's arm them with the truth of what our Constitution says. And it sounded like they were willing to come back here. So let's do it.
Yeah, there were several of them that made comments about, you know, we need to, for, for the different reasons. You know, some of them spoke about the money, some of them spoke about the contact tracing. And there was a couple of them that said something about this fall, like what's going to happen this fall? You know, we have another election coming up. I mean, is he going to again suspend and amend sections of Idaho code for the election? He cannot do that. He cannot do that. So I mean, I hope we can get our legislature back again to convene again before that time. But at the very latest, it's going to have to happen then to deal with the next election.
Right. Well, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
And is there anything to say that the governor will call them back in January?
No.
Right.
Our Idaho Constitution says they must meet once per year.
Once per year.
But it doesn't say when. So for 2021, is he going to wait until December 26th to call a session? He could.
Have you all thought about that?
This is why we have equal branches of government that are a check on one another.
So for every legislator that has said to you, we'll have to handle this in January? First of all, will we even still exist by January? How many children will be taken by January through contact tracing? How much money will be spent? How, how will our, our society survive until January?
All those people's businesses who are closed, everyone who's lost their home. I mean, yeah, no, we can't wait.
So that aside, that clear, obvious issue aside, how do we know that we're, the legislature is going to come back in January? What if the governor doesn't call them back in January? That's part of the process. The governor has to call them back, right? That's their whole thing of why they can't meet now.
Yeah, it says once per year, but he could say, you know, in January, right before the session's supposed to start, he could say, oh, no, 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 it's too dangerous. There's, there's an imminent threat to health and life.
Right.
So you can't convene.
It would make sense around January for people to have a respiratory illness, doesn't it?
Like every year.
Like we do every year.
Every year.
So if we have a respiratory issue of any kind in January, do you really think he's going to call the legislature back in January?
Or even let them come back?
I don't.
No.
I don't think he will.
I don't either. And I don't think people are thinking about that. I think they just go, oh, every January, every January. No, if he says no and says there's too much of a threat, he could delay it. We don't know how long next year.
I bet he would say like, something like June.
Right.
When respiratory issues are gone and the weather's better and all that stuff. So I mean, really, we could be potentially looking at until later next year, like this time next year.
Yeah, we could live under this tyranny for a full another year.
Are you willing to do that?
Absolutely not.
So if you're not willing to do that, then you better get busy taking action. We have got to work harder and be, we've got to be clear with our messaging. We need to educate our legislature and we need to reconvene them and end the state of emergency. I'm going to have to beat that drum, you guys, because there's no way I'm willing to live under this tyranny. Just like Governor Little did yesterday, where we're at stage four, oh, no, now we're at stage three. What happens when we're back at stage two and he says the churches can't meet again? Are you willing to live under that kind of constant maneuvering of whether you're essential enough to exist?
Unbelievable.
I'm not.
I'm not. It's outrageous. It is outrageous. And this is why we have three separate branches of government and why the people's voice is essentially needed here.
Yes.
We are always essential. There's no such thing as non-essential. That word makes me so angry.
It's outrageous.
It is.
And how heartbreaking to hear our elected representatives say that they feel non-essential.
I know. I know. And how infuriating.
Exactly what he's done.
That is our voice in government standing on the House floor saying, we don't, we have been told we're not essential. If every Idahoan is not infuriated about that, I don't even know what they could ever be mad about. That's the most infuriating thing I've ever heard.
Your governor has deemed your legislative representatives as unessential.
Non-essential, yeah.
Okay, we have breaking news. We have, we have breaking news. So I'm shifting gears, y'all. We are, we have breaking news. Health Free, oh, are you gonna, okay. Health Freedom Idaho had a event for Representative Heather Scott on Thursday.
Yeah.
And we were going to hold the, the event. She's going to be talking about the virus that was attacking, that is attacking the Constitution. That is trying to end the Constitution. The COVID virus is attacking the Constitution. Because, yes, and I'm like, yes, get it. I'm so excited to hear what she has to say on that. She has a 40-minute presentation. But guess what? Now that the governor has put us from stage four to stage three, the place that was hosting it in Boise canceled.
Yeah.
Thank you, Governor Little. I'm sure he didn't want Heather, Representative Heather Scott's truthful presentation getting out there.
Right.
So now we're at a place where we still are definitely, even more so, are we determined to have this event.
Oh, yeah. If we have to have it at my house, we're having it.
It's happening.
It's happening.
So we will, we will make sure that on Thursday evening, right around 6 o'clock, Representative Heather Scott is giving her presentation about COVID and the Constitution. Now, she's been drawing a crowd of like 200 and 300 people up north. I would imagine that she's going to draw a larger crowd here. Now, because this whole thing happened yesterday and we were working our butts off trying to get today to happen, we haven't even been able to work out what we're going to do for Thursday evening. Now, make sure you're following HealthFreedomIdaho.org, you're following our Health Freedom Idaho Facebook page and be watching for the update because I guarantee you, we are having this event.
Yeah, we are.
More determined than ever. It must, need to be heard, clearly.
So keep an eye on everything HFI so that you can find out where and what, we are doing 6 o'clock, no matter what. We just have, we just need a place.
Oh, yes. On the Health Freedom Idaho Facebook page, there's an event for this. Make sure to like it so that you see the updates. And yes, we've thought about Ann Morrison Park. I think that that's a great idea. If you have any other ideas or resources, please let us know. You can message Sarah or I or Chelsea, Julie, and message us and let us know. So we, now that this is getting wrapped up, I mean, I'm going to go kind of take you guys outside so you can see what's up. But seriously, breaking news, we need to find a place for Representative Heather Scott to have her presentation on Thursday evening at 6 o'clock. The goal was to open doors at 6, presentation to start at 6:30, 40-minute presentation, 20-minute Q and A. Okay? Yes, Lorena, thank you. Become an HFI member for $10. She's so on it.
I know it. Thank you.
She's so great. Okay, I'm going to turn you all around, right? Whew, I'm going to walk. What's that, love? Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. Okay, so I think I'm going to have you all pose for a minute, or pause for a minute. I'm going to show you around here. Turn this around. Okay. You can see here that everything's emptied out, my friends. Who's, who, she is welcome here. Please, Irene, please message me and let me know what that means, welcome here. Because I want to make sure we've got a good place for Heather Scott to give her presentation. We can't allow the governor to dictate when or when we cannot have our First Amendment rights. That is outrageous and absurd. Okay, hold one moment, please. Oh, well, she's in a conversation. Okay. Okay, so pause one moment and then I'm going to take you all outside so you can see what's going on out there. Yep, yep, yep.
We're the center of our triangle.
You guys don't want to look short or something?
You don't want to double chin?
No.
Okay, did we get everything from up yonder?
My bag?
I did. I got your bag. I didn't know if all of your drinks were in there, but I checked to make sure that there was nothing in there.
Okay, is my red thermos in there? Phew, okay. Oh my gosh, you guys. Here we go. Oh, thanks, love. Thank you very much. Can you believe we lost our venue for Representative Heather Scott?
You just tell me that. You guys need to find, I'm assuming a park. Was it telling you? Am I live?
Yeah, you're live.
Well, we've tried.
That's what I'm thinking too, a park.
We have tried for months and months to find locations and you're not going to. I hate to tell you this, but you're not going to find it.
No.
So, you know, the, the only place we found was at Park, Julius County Park, and they'll let you have it. It's inexpensive. A lot of people there. The amphitheaters there. You can use our sound system if you want.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I was hoping so.
And we have the backup generator, which means if they pull the power on you, like you remember what happened to us, then we get that backup generator. You can run for hours.
Julie, I know we're not paused, honey, because I'm going to take everybody outside. And we're working things out for our lovely Representative Heather Scott. Thank you, Diego, for offering your, this is the freedom man. We love him and his family.
Who else is here?
Oh, okay. Okay, awesome. Oh my gosh. So to answer your question, Lisa, we cannot wait until January. Number one, I mean, Sarah and I kind of just addressed this a little bit earlier in the video, so it'd be a good idea to kind of mark the time here and maybe go back about 10 minutes. We can't afford to wait until January. Of course, our economy will be collapsed and jobs out of business, you know, and services out of business. And not enough money provided by the, by the hard, the backs of the hard-working to keep people on unemployment. So, but the other concern is that what's to say that the governor will call them back in January? It says that the legislature shall convene once a year, one time per year. Um, right.
There's other people that were off the grid. They got crashed.
I think, I have no idea. Right, I'm just kind of checking, coming out to check on things and see what's what. I think they set up somewhere else for the press conference. In fact, now, now I'm remembering that. They set up somewhere else for the press conference. Okay. I think. I think they set up, hey, hey! I think they set up somewhere else for the press conference.
Oh, it's not till noon, right?
Oh, was that at noon? Okay.
It's at noon, yeah.
Okay, y'all, so here's what's going to go down. Because I'm super, need a break and to rehydrate. So I'm going to, let's see, it's noon is when they're going to do the press conference. So I think we'll take a break right now. It is a quarter to 11. So if I see something going down, I'll be sure to go live right away, okay? And until then, I'm just going to see what's happening, see who's where. Make sure that you get good coverage and get back here by noon. Okay, so if you want to see the press conference and hear what they have to say about that, then come back to the Health Freedom Idaho Facebook page at noon. And in the meantime, I'm going to be handing out flyers about Representative Heather Scott's presentation on Thursday at 6. Again, we've had to move the location because of what happened with, with the governor moving Ada County from a stage four to a stage three. So that gives me about an hour to get to work and find us a new venue. Okay, everybody, take care.